Yeah.
So, let's go ahead and get started with our pre-meeting. Alrighty, Mr. City Manager, go ahead and tee off things with the purchase of the SCBA regulators.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you. We have an opportunity to anticipate some needs here with a potential purchase, assuming you all would be okay with it. We, not too long ago, went out to bid to make some purchases along the lines of these regulators and, given the price of things, were not able to make the complete purchase that we were hopeful we could and that we had anticipated. And so pursuant to that, we were hopeful that we could go ahead and complete that purchase and get everybody equipped as we would like. As you saw in the memo, that would include thirty SCOT regulators and the amount of fifty-seven thousand and five SCBAs for our investigators and command staff and so on that haven't had one to theirselves, you know, of their own. My suggestion would be, albeit unbudgeted at this point in time, would be to use some CARES funding that we have available. Not that it has been designated for this necessarily, but that indeed we could use for this if council saw fit. That would amount to about a ninety-four thousand, ninety-four-five purchase. You know, I think it's appropriate. I'd rather our folks have the equipment they need and use quite regularly assigned to them, not necessarily using back and forth among other employees. If possible, if you would see fit, that we could do that. And then, you know, those kinds of needs would be taken care of for quite some time if we can move in that direction.
Great. Questions for Carter? Yeah, Bruce.
So, I'm a scuba diver and every time we go into a new place and we get regulators, we clean them and we use the same regulator that five hundred other people have used. And I'm not buying that they can't be cleaned and disinfected. That is erroneous at best. I don't mind us having some, but that's a lot of money. We have a lot of things more pressing than each individual firefighter having their own regulator. It seems to me that if we had three or four on each truck, or even two or three, you know, not everybody needs to go have one on all the time. We all know this. It just seems like a huge expenditure and I know it's easy to say, but it just makes it better. Well, of course it does. Of course it makes it better, but when everybody has their own. But it's not necessary. It's just absolutely not. So, I can't get behind it. Sorry.
Lisa.
I disagree with Councilman Nell. It almost seems like we have fires daily and it seems like these crews are going multiple different directions. And so, I don't know how they can share the regulators if they're on the east end, west end, up on the mountain and everything else. So, I do think that I do agree with spending this.
Yeah, Bruce.
Well, I do want to clarify and I did say, I think we should have a couple on each truck. Thereby, they're on the east side, they're on the west side, they're in the middle, they're everywhere. We just don't need to purchase thirty, in my opinion.
Any other comments? Yes, Steve.
Well, I'm going to disagree also. It's equipment that's needed. These guys have a job to do. And whether it can be cleaned or not, I feel that having their each individual one, looking at the times we live in right now and not going to use COVID as an excuse, but, you know, these are items that they need to have their own, period. Trading those type of items off or having multiple people use them is just asinine. Give our people the equipment that they need to do their job and do it properly.
Anybody else? Yep, Amber.
Carter, can you give us a little bit of an update on status of CARES Act funds? What we have left, what our timeline is looking at to spend those funds?
Mr. Mayor, I certainly can. Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. We are in the neighborhood of about eleven million of CARES fund dollars that, you know, we believe does not have any restrictions tied to it. Although, I would certainly make the argument that these kinds of purchases, equipment purchases and so on, particularly if we are concerned at all about disease mitigation and that kind of thing. I believe the argument could be made that these dollars are appropriate. However, I would say, as far as I'm concerned, we've passed the test as it relates to the DNA of those dollars and I believe this is a very appropriate case to make. But yeah, eleven million dollars and we really don't have any obligations that we've said we would do that we haven't done yet with the remainder of those dollars.
A quick follow-up. Are the specific part of CARES Act funds, are they unencumbered in terms of timeline? Or is there, I know with, you know, early CARES Act rounds, there were dates, deadlines that had to be spent by. Is this open-ended at this point?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I would say that that is the case, primarily that because these dollars are reimbursement dollars for the most part that we've already taken expense for. And so, from my standpoint, even though I am, you know, sort of sequestering those dollars in what we call a CARES fund, I do believe that council has some latitude in how they spend these dollars.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Amber. No, you're good.
It's still on the same thread, though, so I think that's one, right? So, I mean, I think that's fine. In the scope of having eleven million dollars from CARES Act there, this is not that big of an expense, but I do think it would help me if we, as I keep seeing these sort of like one-by-one small CARES Act expenditures drawing down on that account, it gets a little hard for me to keep track of and it gets a little hard for me to understand, like, where we want to go next with those monies and how to best leverage them for the city. So, I wonder if, I don't have a problem with this specific item, but I wonder if there's a way that we could get some information about, you know, a larger, more holistic thought around those monies and how we might like to see them deployed over time for our citizens.
Anything else? Okay, so you just need to go ahead from us tonight to give you the thumbs up to buy the regulators.
Mr. Mayor, that would be correct. And then, of course, with regard to the next formal step, this would help us prepare for that aspect of this purchase.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Thank you.
So, your thumbs up if you're ready to move forward with that, so they can go to the next step. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, contractual police service management.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Many of you are probably aware that we have a number of relationships with outside entities throughout the community that like to hire police services on a, almost an individual contract basis, if you will, for lack of a better way to describe it. And essentially, what we do is we set that arrangement up, we post the overtime need for our officers to participate, for those who would like to, and we enter into a contractual relationship. And then, once the service has been rendered, we follow up from a billing standpoint to be sure that we get paid with regard to the services that have been rendered, you know, for whatever amount of hours. We include equipment in there and a fully loaded salary and so on. Surprisingly, and I really wasn't aware of this, Vice Mayor Freel probably is well aware of it, we spend about twenty-five hours a month with regard to that effort to try to render those services to our community. It could be at a church, it could be an event, it could be a regular thing, it could be a non-regular thing, per request thing, et cetera. The proposal for you tonight to consider is with regard to outsourcing that effort so that we can recoup those hours for, you know, regular police work that needs to be done, both on the administrative side as well as police officers who are involved in setting these things up, usually command staff and so on, as well as receive additional liability coverage, not only on behalf of the city, but on behalf of the officer, as well as on behalf of the entity that's receiving this service, which is not a coverage that we have enjoyed in the past. And so, our proposal is, our request is, for no charge to the city, to enter into an agreement with this entity that would oversee the contracting, oversee the logistics, as well as oversee the payment to the city so that staff doesn't have to spend any of that time and those services can be maintained at really a no cost to the taxpayers. The, I guess you'd call downside with regard to this idea is that pursuant to the cost to the entity that would be receiving this service, they would see a ten percent surcharge. So, for an event that costs three hundred dollars, you know, for an hour or so of service or two hours, whatever that amounts to, their cost would go up thirty bucks in order to have that service rendered to them and receive those protections as well. So, our hope is that you'll be favorable to this idea. Allow us to be more efficient with respect to the time that we dedicate to overseeing this effort, as well as receiving that additional coverage that we've not received in the past in harmony with those event coordinators and those that are requesting this service, who would receive that coverage as well.
Does anybody have any questions for Carter on this? Amber.
Carter, in conjunction with the conversations we've been having about community promotions and providing this service for a variety of events around town as people, you know, apply and are accepted through that program application, is this service, you know, are we obligated to use it for every outside-of-contract engagement we'd like to undertake whereby, you know, our costs would go up by ten percent? Or are we at liberty to say, for internal programming or things that we want to do through community promotions, we can schedule it for ourselves and not go through this service company?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that'd be exactly right. This would only be for external, off-hour kinds of services that we would extend to other entities.
Other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
Who decides which entity has to use this service or gets police service?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, anybody that would like to hire police services for specific needs would basically be run through this program. So, like I said, it could be a one-time thing, it could be a routine thing, it could be in a variety of different settings, but anybody that would want their own individual service would be run through this program so that we don't have to follow that up and follow up on the billing side and everything else.
Amber.
One thing I thought of that's just a little bit more broad, but when we do this, is it all exclusively overtime hours?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that is the case. And Mr. Mayor, if I could add one more quick point that I think is really attractive about this as well, we spend a lot of time chasing down bills and debating bills and whether or not they've paid what they should and so on. This service gets us out of that business as well. So, with the contract that we're suggesting, they will pay us right away, meaning this third party. And then, the third party goes to the agency or the participant to receive that payment. So, we no longer have to chase bills, we get paid right away and the entity that we're entering into this agreement with takes care of all of the bill rundown and those kinds of things, which I think is also a really nice aspect of this. Thank you.
Lisa.
So, I'm just a little confused. Are these police officers that have the day off that would do this? Or who is going to be the contractual police service?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, this would be officers who sign up for this kind of duty. So, if they're on overtime, it could be during their days off, it could be in any variety of applications, but it is voluntary. They sign up, they put their name on the list and they show up with their unit and participate.
Steve Cathy, then Kyle.
Question for you. How are we going to, are we going to put out an RFP for this organization to manage this? Or how are we going to get this organization to do this management company?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, given that this is a professional services arrangement, we are not under any obligation to do an RFP, if you will, like we would for a public project of like of construction nature, if you will. But this is a company that has been vetted by the chief and he's real familiar with this entity. They have a lot of customers that are similar in sophistication to our organization. And so, we are proposing this direction.
Thank you. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. And apologies, Carter, if you already addressed this, but what is the current utilization of contractual, you know, contracting of our police officers? How many hours a month or a year are we currently dedicating to this? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd probably have to defer that question to the chief, if that's all right.
Mayor, Councilman, we have multiple entities that we use on a recurring basis. This weekend was the state wrestling tournament and we had officers there under these contractual services. So, the Ford Wyoming Center, sometimes their staffing, or their artists, if you will, require additional police presence and it's, you know, and we work with them. There's local churches, we get hired for weddings. It happens a lot. And so, it varies from year to year, but you can anticipate anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand hours this year that we will contract to these outside entities to provide police services to them of one hundred percent off-duty police officers.
Amber.
Thank you. I would like to see if there's a way, when we put this forward for approval, if we can leave it off consent, in case there are folks who do use this service that would like to come talk to us about how this might impact them. It's quite a bit of user ship, it sounds like, so I would just prefer to give them a chance to weigh in from the user side on this. And I did have another question, but, oh, yeah. So, the twenty-five hours monthly that we're spending now on sort of the admin side of this, are we factoring that in currently to how we bill for the contractual services? Or are they just sort of, are we donating those essentially to this effort at this point?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct. These are hours that we absorb in order to administer the program and convey this service. So, we do not bill those.
Chief, did you have anything? Did you want to add? Thought maybe something might have been on your...
You know, we're running out of time, so I could be very quick. This is a very convenient, it's easy for everybody around. So, all of the people that use this, instead of having to contact us and have to come in and sign papers and stuff, they just access this online. It gets posted. We receive a multitude of benefits from this, including scheduling software. The vendors, the persons that are contracting with us, they get the pleasure of being able to confirm on a moment's notice that in fact, the officer did come. There's geo-fencing on it. And as soon as the officer gets on scene, it alerts them, hey, you have your police officers there. There's a lot of benefits to this, but not the least of which is a thirteen million dollar liability umbrella and it covers them and it covers us. So, take for example, when we were assisting one of our local churches in letting their people leave the parking lot safely. Even under the best of circumstances, we expect people to stop for us, but a drunk driver comes along and lacks the ability to stop and while we're there protecting them, the drunk driver runs through our attempt to stop him and hits that innocent citizen. We are liable for that. We contracted to provide safety to them. This really helps cover us. Thirteen million dollars per incident and some of these times on our own city rules when we require people to have liability insurance for some of these events, this fits that bill and it doesn't even, they don't have to go hire that extra insurance. So, it could be construed to be money-saving also to the contracting persons.
Yeah, Bruce.
So, the administration of this, the rider, that's all covered under that ten percent surcharge?
Mayor, Councilman, that's absolutely correct.
Thank you, Chief. So, Carter, you just need a thumbs up from us tonight?
That would be great.
Okay. And the only other question I had is I had Amber had asked about putting this, not having this on a consent. Is that something that one council member can just request? Or do you need all of us to give a thumbs up on that or how do we proceed with a request like that?
Certainly, I think if council does not want it on consent, we would move in that accord and make that happen.
Okay. Is council okay with having that off of consent? Yeah, okay. Okay, great. Okay, 2023 interim topics. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're getting to the point in the legislative season where interim topics need to be identified so that we can move them forward for hopeful interim discussion during the off-season, if you will, between legislative sessions. Oftentimes, what that means is committees will take up these topics to discuss ideas and ways to approach, you know, items of concern. There's always a number of topics that get assigned and by virtue of our relationship through WHAM, we can certainly submit those topics through WHAM or indeed directly to the management council so that we can get those topics assigned through their efforts and with whatever legislators we would ask to carry that idea for us. The topics that we would like to promote as interim topics for discussion are as follows. We are hopeful to get your blessing to move forward on missing persons, to get your blessing to move forward on enhanced crime legislation. Some know it as biased crime. We are also hoping to get your support for further discussion on the alcohol statutes that are in place and hopefully open the dialogue for some ideas there. And also with respect to autonomy as it relates to local government funding. Some of those are routine, very routine topics that we see from year to year and definitely during the non-budget session. But with your blessing, we'd like to move those forward and see what we can get by way of support.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Is everybody okay with Carter moving forward with that? Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Carter, do you have anything on agenda review?
I do not.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the agenda tonight? It's pretty straightforward, I think. Okay, we'll start in about two minutes. Okay, it's six o'clock, so let's go ahead and get going. Before we begin the meeting tonight, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones at this time. I now call the March first, 2022 regular council meeting to order. All members are present. Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair had entertained a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the February fifteenth, 2022 regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on February twenty-sixth, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice, excuse me, moved by Councilmember Pollock, seconded by Vice Mayor Freel. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Chair had entertained a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the February fifteenth, 2022 executive session. Moved by Councilmember Gamroth, seconded by Councilmember Sutherland. Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Chair had entertained a motion to approve by minute action the March first, 2022 bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Inga Breton, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Tonight, we bring the bright spots in our community, the Blue Envelope donation. Tonight, we'd like to welcome, I'm going to butcher this name, I know it, Riya. Riya, thank you so much. O'Neil and Ken Morse from the Blue Envelope Health. Thank you for coming this evening and for your support for our community. If you'd please come forward. I'd like to share a little bit about how you helped our community, so I'm going to let you stand there and get embarrassed real quick. The Blue Envelope Health Fund is a unique local organization committed to health in Neptuna County and in central Wyoming. Blue Envelope has come to symbolize a very special commitment to education, prevention and early detection. In January 2022, thanks to the Blue Envelope Health Fund purchase of twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-three and thirty-four cents, Casper Fire EMS was able to outfit four trucks with advanced life support capable AEDs. Through this generous donation by the Blue Envelope Health Fund, all the fire apparatuses operated by the Casper Fire EMS are now equipped with advanced life support capable AEDs. In addition to the generous fire department contribution in February 2022, the Blue Envelope approved another city request for funding to purchase thirteen additional AEDs with a total cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two for the city facilities. The new AEDs will be used at these high-public traffic or high-employee-population locations and replace AEDs that have exceeded their useful life and no longer supported by the manufacturer. The new units will provide lifesaving care to the citizens and employees in need of assistance until first responders can arrive. The City of Casper would like to recognize the Blue Envelope Health Fund for their substantial and gracious donation of over thirty-two thousand dollars to the City of Casper and the Casper Fire EMS. Riya, if you'd like to say a couple words, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you guys for reaching out. The Blue Envelope Health Fund, for many of you, you may know of the Blue Envelope group. We've been around since nineteen fifty-eight in Neptuna County. We've been helping with the heart division, cancer division, mental health division and wellness division. Some of you remember those blue envelopes that you get every year, so you're welcome to donate and/or ask for funding. And so, help us when you can. When you can't, reach out for help and we're here to help everybody because everybody in Neptuna County help is a body that we help. So, just reach out when you need us. We're here to help.
Thank you so much. Please extend the City of Casper's gratitude back to the board and the work that you guys do. We really appreciate that. Great. Thank you so much. Now is the time that we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we do ask for the following. Please state your name and address. Please direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal tax on staff or counsel will be tolerated. Counsel will not respond to personnel matters. These will all be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by the council. Presentations will be limited to five minutes and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed and no time extensions will be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment, period. So, please hold those comments on those items until we reach them. So, if anyone wants to come forward for public comment.
Hello, my name's Jake Milney. I'm from nine forty-three Horseshoe Road here in Casper. I'm coming to talk to you guys about something that I feel like has been put on the back burner for a while and that's wind turbine blades in our landfill. I represent about a coalition of about twelve companies and that's growing every day. I've actually reached out to the city manager's office and he's put me in touch with Advanced Casper, which is great and I appreciate that. But I think that this is something that's kind of fallen to the wayside. We're still in the national eye all over and just in conversations I've had today, it's blasted all over the whole industry. And just in conversations I've had today, it's blasted all over the whole industry. And we've come up with solutions that we can get that stuff out of there. I think that we can extend the life of the landfill by at least 20 years and increase the profits of, from about $6 to $8 million based on my initial projections. That does not include the voids of the in-between the blades, of the dirt that's gone in there. And I just, I'm here to talk to you guys about that. You know, I initially started working on this a couple of years ago when this hit national news. And it's taken me several years to come up with a plan that's actually green and reduces the carbon footprint and reduces the cost of all of this and extends it to the consumer. After years of research and working with other companies, we've come up with great solutions. And I can't give you great detail on what those are without having everyone in this room sign an NDA. So we know that's not gonna happen. But I'm here just to make sure it stays at the forefront because I know that our citizens are very concerned about this and we're sick of being on national news. You know, they're, these blades are easily turned into other products. What we're looking to do is work with the state, the city. We've also been to Senator Loomis's office to discuss with her, and she's backing us up on the things that we're doing. We're not only looking to just reduce how much we are putting in the landfills, but recycle and reuse. These can be anything from the local guy here planning to make canoes and kayaks out of them to different kinds of boats, snow fencing. The list goes on. Every day, it's growing. You know, I think that the biggest thing for me to be here to discuss with you guys is that we made $651,000 by putting those in the landfill. And I find it asinine not to look at a way to get rid of them, to make another $6 million at minimum. Extend our life of our landfill, quit using more land around in Wyoming when we know as Wyomingites that we prize ourselves on our land and conservation. One thing I'd like to, the Blue Envelope thing, I'd like to congratulate you guys on what the work you guys have done. Other than that, that pretty much sums it up. I'd love to talk to you guys more about it. The reason I'm here is just to keep the conversation going. We're looking to continue to work with the city manager's office and Advanced Casper, along with Loomis and everyone else that we've been working with. But just wanted to make sure that we're still being heard because this has kind of gone mute across the whole state for quite a while now. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, cut.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, was it Jake?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming and speaking to us tonight. If you have a plan for us to make $6 to $8 million in revenue from the wind blades that we have up at the landfill, I would be very curious to see that. So please feel forward to email us at. Part of the issue, it might be moot these days, or you might not hear about it these days, is at one of our council meetings in the recent months, I had asked Cindy Langston, our Solid Waste Manager, about the wind blades, whether we were still accepting them. And she said we haven't for some time and she didn't expect to see any, any time in the future because of the creation of recycling plants and stuff around the country. So from what I understand, I don't think we've accepted those for probably a year or more and probably won't see anymore in the near future.
But that doesn't handle the problem, the fact that the ones that are still there right now, that can be taken out. And that's, you're not gonna really make money off of getting rid of them other than opening that up for more waste to be put in there. Right now, there's been, there's been an RFQ sent out to a Midwestern company that's gonna be working on this. And, you know, what are, what are they gonna do with it? None of us really know because that is a closed bid until it is awarded. You know, so the City of Casper is really not gonna know about it. And I think that we're all gonna catch a lot of grief when that comes to light that there's someone here in Casper that has a solution and someone from another state's gonna take all that money somewhere else when we're putting people to work right here and we're keeping that money here in the state. Is my, that's where I feel about it.
No further questions this time. I'd love to talk further though, thanks.
Councilmember Neil.
Thank you. Well, if that's true, I guess it wouldn't matter to us much what another state does if you've got a plan. And, I mean, I don't know where you go from here. Is that something he, he deals with you on or, or, you know, since they're buried in our city landfill? But I wouldn't imagine that any other state's decision on opening up any bid or what they're gonna do with ours has any bearing.
That's not what I meant. I meant that there's already been a proposal presented to the city from an out-of-state company. And I understand, Mr. Manager, that you guys were not aware of us until earlier, probably last week sometime. But again, I'm just here to make sure that Wyoming's voice is heard, Casper's voice is heard, that we have the solution and we can keep that money in the state. We can put our people back to work and we can extend the life of the landfill. What was it, 35, 40 years cut off the landfill at least?
Well, I guess my question would be, where do we go from here, Carter? Or it sounds like maybe you've already given him some direction. I'm just curious.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, first of all, I'm not aware of an RFQ process, so I'd like to learn more about that if, if in fact that's out there. Secondly, with respect to a proposal, I would be very comfortable working hand in glove with Mr. Farley in reviewing proposals. That would be an economic development initiative, particularly if it relates to a local business. But as it relates to an approach without a proposal, there isn't really a lot we can do or much further we can go without seeing what it is that they would be offering specifically. Generally speaking, with respect to getting into the landfill, that, that's, that's not as easy as it might sound. Just letting a business, you know, get in there and so on, it requires approval by the state and DEQ. So there's a lot of steps we gotta take in that regard as well. So just to give you a flavor with, with respect to where we might wanna go from here, I think it starts with a proposal and we'd be happy to see one. But again, I would be working in harmony with Mr. Farley so that we're all in tandem with each other in terms of where this could go, particularly if we're talking about a new business that could be created.
And just as a follow-up, my assumption is if, if this is viable and you've got a proposal, I would imagine there's probably money out there available to, to help you do this, especially in the recycling area. So.
Absolutely. We've been working with Mr. Ames with Loomis's office in Cheyenne. And he's working us on helping us find grants and things of that nature to deal with this. Another problem that was brought to my attention by Farley was that he was concerned, and I understand the city's concern, is who owns those blades? With also having an asbestos background, I know that when I take asbestos to the dope, I don't own it. The city doesn't own it. Sinclair or whoever I take that asbestos from owns it for the life of the asbestos. And from what I've talked to from people in the industry is that it's the same thing with the blades. So there is that hurdle that we have to cross. We've gotta get in touch with these operators and figure out, okay, are you gonna let us do this? Can we catalog it? Absolutely, we can. It's cradle to grave, our system. And in the long run, I think that it's great for everybody. We're working with people like Johns Manville with their R&amp;D team to come up with new insulation techniques, things of that nature. We're actually getting ready to look at making our own insulation to, because they have so many loops and holes they have to jump through. But I think it might be easier for us to go ahead and make that insulation. There is a huge problem with trying to get raw materials to make these materials in the United States right now. And we're able to provide those. But because of their engineers and their, the way that they do things and their corporate hierarchy, it's very hard to get that passed through. I think that we can get around those, being a smaller company, have the right engineers in place, local engineers. And I, I think there's definitely a way to work through all of this. And again, I appreciate you sending Mr. Farley to me. I just wanted to come down here and, and make sure that my voice was heard.
Great. So it sounds like the ball is kind of getting started. As far as that, it sounds like you're here to give us some awareness so that we know that it's out there and you guys are local. And we really appreciate you coming in and having that conversation with us. Still, yeah, stay in touch with Justin at, at Advance, our city manager, and keep us up to date and feel free to come back and update us as well.
I will as we get things going forward.
Thanks, Jake. We appreciate your time, man. Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Tony. 1028 South Beach. I'm here to rekindle some talks about Hogedon's premature closure in 2020 and how that impacted the season pass buyers. I think when that happened, there was some alluding to the fact that the pass holders would see some compensation for their season. It was, it was cut three weeks short, 15 total skier days per pass holder. In my household, that's 60 skier days that we lost as a result. And so anyways, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of rekindle that, that discussion. I'm a, I'm an outdoor business operator. And when operators cancel, it's on them.
So we'll start with this. So it was, Mr. City Manager, maybe you can kind of give me some clarification. Was there a message that was sent out somehow that there might be some type of reimbursement for the closure of the season?
Mr. Mayor, if there was some reimbursement discussion, it wasn't anything that I authorized. And so this, this is a relatively new topic to me.
Okay.
I'd like the opportunity to look into it. But no, I, I didn't authorize any communication that would say pass holders are gonna be remunerated.
So can I put you in touch with our city manager? I don't know if you've talked to him before.
No, I've actually was just kind of waiting for people to, to kind of like poke their heads up and go, you know, we made the wrong decision.
Sure.
I really feel like it's not a very honorable decision, frankly.
So if I, if we get you in touch with our city manager and he's really good at kind of looking into what happened and seeing, and he can kind of get some information, and instead of putting him on the spot right now, we can maybe do a little investigating on that and get your, your information to, to Carter. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. You're good, Mileage.
Mileage, Mike, 742 North Jefferson Street, Casper, Wyoming, 8201. I wanted to, to get with and, and ask the, Mr. Mayor if he would do the motorcycle safety and awareness for us this year.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. At the beginning, did you do a?
You did it once before.
Yes. Yeah, I'd love to, Mike. Yeah, that'd be great. Yep.
I'm, I'm very, very pleased with the work that the city has done on trying to revamp, per se, this paperwork. And I think they finally got it. And I, and I realize it's, it's, it, it, there was a reason it was a mess because everyone was in, in different directions and, and all that. But I really like what Carla's come up with, or her folks, or whatever. And the, the only, the only question that I, that I would think to be negative is still trying to get us motorcyclists that are, that are already insured, to be insured for that, for that parade or run or whatever. I, I don't think that's, that's fair. I don't think it's fair to Wyoming Central Abate. I don't think it's fair to the people. And I just don't think it's fair. We, we run up and down these highways and byways daily if there's not ice in it. But I, I appreciate what the city has done. Another thought. Oh! I'm always gotta have something negative involved. Last year, well.
Should've ended with the positive and started with the negative, Mileage.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
I got it backwards here.
Go ahead.
Last year, we was running, running late for the, for the Tory Run. And the city and the, and the police decided, and we all decided together that because there was so many officers out because of the virus and stuff. And that we would do our normal stop, stop, stop signs and, 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 and.
Got 45 seconds, Mileage.
Okay. And so I had already paid the $15 for the permit. And now they're saying I gotta pay again. I said, well, you know, that's, that's just something, somebody might wanna check in.
Okay.
I mean, $15 isn't, isn't much, but for a organization, it seems to be. And it's the point of the thing, too.
We'll look into it further, Mileage.
Okay.
And Mileage, will you, will you give me, give me a call or email me the date, the date and the time? You need me there for that.
And I will email you the proclamation and stuff.
Perfect. Yep. We'll get that taken care of. Thanks, Mileage. Take care. Anybody else? Okay. We'll begin the meeting. The public hearings. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Establishing March 15th, 2022 is the public hearing date for the consideration of New Microbrewery Liquor License Number 9 for Stay Who's Brewery and Tap Room LLC, doing business as Stay Who's Brewery and Tap Room, located at 1015 East C Street. And establishing April 5th, 2022 is the public hearing date for the consideration of a Board of Equalization for the purpose of considering an assessment role for Local Assessment District 158 Coats Road Asphalt Surfing Improvements.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to by minute action establish the public hearing dates just read. Moved by Councilmember Kathy, seconded by Councilmember Gamroth. Any abstentions or nay votes? Councilmember Pollock.
I'd like to abstain from 8A1A, please.
Any others? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With the abstention of Councilmember Pollock noted, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 1.16.101, Ward Boundaries Described, Election Districts of the Casper Municipal Code.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, seconded by Vice Mayor Freel. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers are allowed. Any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent resolution by title only.
Sole source purchase of five in-car video computers and body cameras from PCN Strategies.
Chair to entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Inga Bretson, seconded by Councilmember Sutherland. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on these items? Thank you. So please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent, consent minute action titles. Please read the consent, consent minute action titles.
Item 11A1, the purchase of diesel fuel from Homeax. Item 11A2, the reappointment of Ronald Shosh Jr. to the Old Yellowstone District Architectural Design Review Committee. Item 11A3, the appointment of Mick McIntosh, Joe Hutchinson, Mary Beth Plocek as Planning and Zoning Commission Representatives to the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee. And item 11A4, appointing Tyler Exesser, Jamie Hagler, and Julie Condalario to the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action items just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Gamroth, seconded by Councilmember Inga Bretson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote.
Oops.
Well...
I had no on my mind.
Please, please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you. At this time, we do ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilmember Johnson.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Thanks to Casper Fire EMS for publishing their annual report. Just a couple highlights, they responded to 8,333 calls for service in 2021, average response time, four and a half minutes. Always doing a great job, and I appreciate those reports can kind of give us an idea of what it is you guys deal with on a regular basis. I was joined by many of my colleagues and the city manager at the Wyoming Association of Municipalities Convention last week. I just wanted to thank them all for their company and attendance, as well as thank Mayor Hall from Cody, the Cheyenne City Council, and everyone else that met with us during that time. I found it a really valuable experience and was able to learn a lot, so looking forward to see what results from some of the conversations we had last week. And then I didn't make it to my Casper Youth Council meeting this last Sunday, but the meeting before that, they're meeting twice a month now, Chelsea Combe from Visit Casper came and spoke to the group about working on branding and marketing. That's what she does for Visit Casper, so I wanted to thank Chelsea for her attendance, and looking forward to seeing what that group comes up with as a result of those conversations. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Inga Bretson.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I won't repeat too much of what Councilman Gamroth just said, but I did join him in Cheyenne for the Wyoming Association of Municipalities Conference. It was really great for all of us to be there, and I had back-to-back conferences there. I just got back today from the governor's conference on tourism and hospitality, so slightly different angle, but a lot of the same type of work. Unfortunately, that meant that I had to miss two city meetings, Economic Development Joint Powers Board and the OYD meeting, but consider it to be a trade-off. Important work happening in Cheyenne right now, and so I was honored to be able to be down there to continue to advocate on behalf of the city of Casper, to our local delegation that's there, and other representatives and senators across the state. So thank you for that opportunity.
Councilmember Neal.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Sutherland.
Um, nothing to add, but it was great being in Cheyenne, too. Definitely learned a lot, and it was nice to, to get to speak with some of the people that Kyle and Amber mentioned already. That's it for me. Thanks.
Councilmember Kathy.
Well, Councilmember Gamroth started off the shout-out to the fire department. Something I was going to go ahead and bring up was that, since I brought up the police last week, but along with that 8,333 calls, so everybody doesn't think we had over 8,000 fires in this city, 5,475 of those were for EMS calls, which did not include vehicular accidents with injuries. 297 were for vehicular accidents with injuries, and 838 of those calls were actually canceled while the equipment was en route. So we didn't have near as many fires as what we might have thought of, but I am sure the EMS people on the ambulances and the people that called 911 really appreciate the fire department responding on these EMS calls. I know back about eight years ago in 2012, when I had to call EMS for my wife's stroke, the fire department was the first one there, and they were able to get her taken care of and stabilized before the ambulance even got there. So I know those folks really appreciate the work the fire department does, so congratulations and thank you to the fire department.
Vice Mayor.
All right, so a couple things. OYD meeting, we went over the state office building, they're starting to move in this week, and I think we have a, they officially open next week, is my understanding, but they're moving into the office building this week. Also during the OYD meeting, we elected a new chair and vice chair. Unfortunately, Amber wasn't there to accept her nomination, so, but Amber is now the chair of the OYD meeting, or the OYD group itself, which I think is a very good thing, because we need some good leadership in there, for sure. The other thing that I want to bring up in listening, and these are my opinions, so not here to offend anybody, but in listening to discussions tonight and kind of thinking back to some of the discussions we've had in the last couple of weeks, you know, when it comes to first responders, period, whether you're a fireman or a policeman, it's becoming difficult to attract people to do those jobs. And when, you know, we've questioned a lot of things here lately, and, and there's a difference between questioning and then just making a decision because it's our gut feeling that that's the way it should be. Equipment is needed by both of them to do their job. And we've brought into question the last couple of weeks on the police department's side whether or not vehicles are, are necessary. Well, be in there and have done that. If we went back to the old way of doing things, you're going to have all kinds of problems, and you're going to have shorter, or longer response times, and longer response times translates into more people potentially dying or not getting the help that they need. Equipment, if it's needed, I don't, at, at any point do I ever feel that the fire or the police come up here and tell us that they need something because it's a nice-to-have type thing. If they're up here asking for it, they need it. And if there's one thing I've gotten tired of over the last four years, it always seems like we put things on the back of our, backs of our employees. If they need it, they need it. You know, yeah, things can be cleaned, things can be shared, but we just listened to the Blue Envelope come up here and explain to us how they just provided four fire trucks with advanced life savings devices that we didn't have. And without having those on the truck, those particular trucks, when they go and respond to a call, could somebody potentially not be safe because they didn't have that? Absolutely. So they don't have all the equipment they need. But what I can guarantee is, when they come up here and ask for it, for us to sit here and question whether or not they, they need it, there's, there's a difference between questioning and having the facts whether or not they need it, and just making a decision here that, that they don't. I'm glad it got passed tonight. They need the equipment, so it should be given to them. But I'm going to get off my high horse on this, but we need to take care of our employees, and we definitely need to take care of our first responders, because they're the ones that will be taking care of you.
Thank you. So I don't really have a whole lot, but I, I do have one very important thing that I wanted to bring everybody's attention to. Not a lot of people know the, the inner workings of our city council and the work that goes into our city council. It takes a lot of time and effort to put these, these scripts together, the agendas, all this stuff, and it's an incredible, incredible amount of time and effort and organization. It has been, I've been on here almost eight years, and I know Sean has, too, and I had no idea, you thought, oh, I'm going to get elected, I'm going to come over here and do some great stuff, and, and then the amount of things that need to be put together. And that's all done through the city clerk's office. And one of the, one of the finest people that I've had the opportunity to work with for the last eight years here is Krista. And one of the things that, Krista has always been one of the kindest, most genuine human beings I've ever met, and I had that opportunity. And so anytime I tried to get in the office, I always made it a point to say hi to her, and she always had the most wonderful things to say to me, and always, always, always checked in on me. She said, are you doing okay? How are you doing? Especially the years I served as mayor and that time. Sadly, we are losing Krista, as she is getting a much deserved promotion into the finance office. And so she has served in this role for nine years, and you will be sorely missed. And I appreciate the effort. I know in 2018, when I was mayor, and the time in here briefly that we worked together when I was mayor, but the work that you've done has been impeccable. You're an amazing asset to this, to the city, and we appreciate that. I'm glad we're not losing you at all from the city, but I am really, really sad that we're going to lose you and your voice and your kindness. So I think she deserves a big round here for us, too. So may your new adventure be everything that it's supposed to be, and, and may God bless you and your family. Thank you. The next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, in the council meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, March 15th, 2022, in the council chambers. The chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Kathy, seconded by Councilmember Pollock. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you.